Thank you, I'd like to now call this meeting of the regular Board meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:10 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod Waddell, Jefferson High School graduate, for being here tonight to help with the broadcast of Comcast Channel 20 of our Board meeting. Thank you for always being here and making sure everything works like it's supposed to. At this time, we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. Four Auburn High School students recently earned a perfect score, a 36 on the ACT. Seniors Logan Power, Will Snedeker, and Lucas Turner, and Junior Ethan Stromback all learned of their success last month. Only around 1/10th of 1% of students who take the ACT earn a 36. Earning a perfect score is no doubt impressive. Four students earning a 36 at the same school is a solid reflection of hard work and dedication. Scores from the ACT reflect what students have learned throughout high school. The test focuses on academic achievement and mastery of skills and knowledge taught in schools. All four students are in the RPS 205 Gifted Academy. Congratulations to these students, their families, and teachers and staff who have supported them in their academic careers. Please join me in congratulating these students who are here with us this evening.
Right. Absolutely amazing. Way to go. Very, very proud of you guys. Congratulations. Well done. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Earl. Very, very proud of you all. We are now at the petitions and communications portions of our meeting where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to our Board policy 2.23o, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to 30 minutes total. The Board will not respond to your comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We only have one speaker tonight, so I don't have to go through the order, but I just will say it's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. If you look on the -- we have a clock on the wall for two minutes. I understand it's misbehaving tonight, so we'll just try to judge it. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation, and our speaker tonight, one speaker, is Scott Summa. Thank you for being here.
I'm here on behalf of all the teachers in the room and the other room to express our confidence, appreciation, and support for the REA bargaining team. There was a rumor that our membership lacks support for our team due to the fact that we chose not to ratify the proposed contract, not once, but twice. That is far from the truth. We know that just because you disagree with your brothers and sisters, it doesn't mean that you're not family or union. We recognize the sacrifice the bargaining team has made on our behalf. The time and energy they have given to this process is tremendous and arduous, and that goes for you too, Mr. Scovano and Mrs. McCullough. Over the last few years, and partly due to the working relationship of Dr. Jared, Dawn, and Paul, teachers have become more involved and empowered in our district. The chasm that existed between teachers and administrations in the past has lessened. More people are at the table, and a greater number of voices are being heard. We celebrate and want to build on this. The same spirit has embraced our union. More people are involved, more discussion, and subsequently, more disagreement. The union is one, but we are many as well. So, let us be clear. We support our bargaining team. Let us be transparent. We want a better contract than what we have rejected. Let us be honest. No one wants a strike. It is an option we would rather not choose. It is in no one's interest to go down that road. There's an old union song that asks, "Which side are you on?" Well, we are on the side of our students, who we have dedicated our careers to. We are on the side of fellow teachers and union members who deserve adequate compensation and professional respect. And to reiterate, we are on the side of our bargaining team. Would they please stand and be recognized?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for being here. I would ask, are there any Board member comments at this time? Mr. Siegel?
I have one.
Okay.
I'd like to give a shout out to Kathy Ellis. Kathy Ellis has been coming to the Operations Committee meetings, month after month after month, and reporting on a really difficult job that she has to do. As you're all aware, over the summer, we got a new custodial contract, and -- which was actually against the administration's recommendation. But we listened to those who were saying we needed a change, and we made the change. It's not been an easy change. And month after month after month, Kathy Ellis has been the point of communication between the schools and the administration, largely through operations. And I think she's done a really good job of using that communication tool to try and pull along progress with our custodial service group. So, I just wanted to tell Kathy Ellis, I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up. And I promise that the next meeting, we won't beat you up. Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Rollins? I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody who was involved in the Fine Arts Week for the district. Sometimes, it's difficult to see progress in this district. I have to remind myself that when I got on the Board in April of 2011, I started asking about the state of fine arts and was stunned to find out that there was not a single middle school choir. We were down to one middle school band, and Guilford had just gone an entire year without a choir. And to see how far we've come since 2011, I only made it to one event. I made it to the orchestra and choir concerts at the Coronado. And the number of kids who are participating, and the number of courses that we have, have expanded so much that they turned it into an entire week. They split up the concerts at the Coronado so that their choir and orchestra were one night, and band was another night. Band had its whole entire night at the Coronado. And to see that number of people, and to see the energy and the kids that were participating, and there were a lot of people who put a lot of work into it, including its central administration, including all the teachers who were involved. And so, I just, I'm happy to see it, and I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you. I also have that on my list of things that I wanted to bring up, because I got to attend two of the fine arts events. The band concert at the Coronado on that Wednesday, and then on Saturday, there was an elementary school music program, I think with all just fifth graders from every elementary school, or almost every elementary school, and that was held at Marshall. And just fabulous participation and fabulous support by the teachers and the families of those children in those programs. But I want to give a shout out also to the four music teachers, who were the Frankie Valley Quartet, doing a wonderful job of performing at both the orchestra night and band night. What a great job they did. So, congratulations to everyone that has a connection with the fine arts program and the celebration that they put together for us. So, Mrs. McCullough?
I just want to take a second to talk about a different union, the Building and Trades Union. They have a career expo once a year, and the Teamsters operating, the engineers, plasters, elevator, heat, painting, ironworkers, boilermakers, bricklayers, carpenters, there's a whole list, come together and volunteer their time to the high school students who come over and learn about their different occupations. And there's a lot of virtual opportunities. When I was there last year, had an opportunity to spray paint virtually. It wasn't real great. Weld, operate large machinery. It is fascinating to watch the students as they become engaged with opportunities that exist for them to move forward. And I can't say enough positive about the people who put together the event. I think it's Rhonda Brown from the district. But also, again, from the unions that come forward, volunteer their time, and really try to work with the students to let them know what's available, what's out there, what they have to do, and also to motivate them with their education, because they do explain to them that they can't move on into these until they finish, you know, their high school education. So, that is this week. It's February 13th through 15th at the Carpenter's Training Center. You know, I don't know how they do with drop-ins and teachers or anybody, but if you have an opportunity or you're interested, especially Board members, to hear what's going on with the academies that we have, moving our students, trying to have them career-ready, it's just a great opportunity, and I want to thank all of them for their participation and support.
Thank you. Any other Board member comments?
If not, we'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items, the meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request logs, contracts under $10,000, and travel. The bid recommendations for the always exciting new school buses, the Bloom and Brookview window replacement, the Roosevelt and Marshall re-roofing, the demolition of Walker Elementary School, the District Management Group addendum for innovation zones, the K-12 insight addendum for parent and student feedback, and the closed session minute release, as well as the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Siegel. Are there any items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
8A and 8B.
8A and 8B. Okay. And then, Mr. Connor?
I'd like to pull 8C and 8D.
All righty. Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion and a second for item 8A, which is the IFB for the new school buses.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, this is just, I used to ask questions about this. I just want to bring it up again. We always get two bids, and there are three manufacturers of school buses in the U.S. It's International, Thomas-Bilt Bus, and Bluebird. And we only get bids from two of the three. And the explanation I was given once in the past is that the third, I think it might be Thomas-Bilt, is small enough that they only build the order, and you have to order at least a year in advance, which we have never in the past been able to do. So, I'm just going to throw out there a suggestion that, you know, the more competition, the better. That to the extent that, you know, our finances, especially with the new school funding formula, get to be a little bit better, if we could do a little bit more multi-year forecasting and maybe start buying a little bit more in advance, that we might be able to get three bids instead of two, and that that might actually help. And that's the only comment I've got.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Connor?
The one thing I will say is, we do have an increase, I believe, from last year. And I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe that the average age of the buses is going down, so we have made progress on this.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the IFB for the new school buses.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough? Mrs. McCullough?
Button challenged.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of IFB 8B, which is the Bloom and Brookview window replacement.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
So, actually, Mr. Baling, you're up.
Okay.
I had a community member email me a photo of Bloom, and how bad it looks. And I understand that we're replacing the windows, which is good, but then the other piece of it is the paint. So, you know, so the paint on whatever, I'm not going to be able to describe it. It looks awful. So, my question is, once we replace the windows, is there a plan to repaint, or is it going to be done in connection with replacing the windows? What's going on?
I cannot tell you if that school is on the list for this summer. We're trying to hit half a dozen to seven or eight each summer with the outside painting, usually after the windows have been done. So, I believe Nashville, perhaps Flynn, maybe some additional painting at Guilford, a couple others that we're hitting this summer. So, yes, it's not in conjunction with the window replacement, may not be the immediate summer thereafter, but yes, we are maybe in an informal program.
It's really bad.
Yeah. And a lot of the bad, bad paint at Bloom is right there on that library windows, and those will be completely removed and replaced, so. And I think that's soft it right there in front of that, is being addressed this summer.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Bloom and Brookview window replacement bids.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item is 8C, which is the IFB for the Roosevelt and Marshall re-roofing. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
The reason I pulled this one is, if you looked at it, the low bid did get it, but if you noticed across the bids, the winning bid actually had the, almost in reverse, if you look at the two. And I have an answer from Mr. Youngblood when I asked this question, and basically, what he said was, the individual bids specifically were listed in reverse. That's why it looks that way. They essentially rejected it, but it wasn't corrected, and the low bid still went to this particular contractor. So, that's the reason. So, if it looks weird, the total amount is what we're really going against, and that makes sense. And it's just a standard practice, is what he was saying. So, anyway, I just wanted to explain, if anybody looked at it, that it still will be managed according to the total.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
So, what we're voting on is the $259,500 for Martin &amp; Company. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. What are we voting on?
You're voting to accept the base combined bid for HC Anderson in the amount of $458,261.
So, on the agenda item details fiscal impact dollar amount, for the executive summary says $259,500. So, yes, I am confused.
The one I'm looking at says $458,261.
Okay. I'll show you mine.
No, this is, but that's, I can't get in there.
Okay. Okay. So, oh, this is on Roosevelt and Marshall. My apologies.
I entered four times. Won't let me in.
Okay. I found it. So, we're voting on $458,261. Okay. Just to make sure. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Oh, wait. Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the IFB 8C for Roosevelt and Marshall re-roofing.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is for the 8D, the demolition of Walker Elementary Schools. Our motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
I'm going to do something I usually don't do, which is, I'm going to make a personal comment on this one. First, the fact is that the bids came under what was projected, and kudos to the operations team for really doing a good job of managing all this. The second thing is that this has been a long journey, and a difficult one, and I know there's a lot of strong feelings on this one around Walker. So, it is coming to a close after being, from my point of view, difficult. And I certainly understand why people are, there are certain folks that are still very much tied to the building, and I think people understand that. And what I'll say is that it was a public process. I appreciate everybody who was involved. This is now, if you will, the final chapter, and the Park District is going to take it over. So, I think there's good things that are going to be coming to that neighborhood. And as a reminder, no matter what anybody said, or pointedly wrote in the newspaper incorrectly, this was something that was a public process, and the people in the neighborhood wanted this strongly, 75%. So, this is really a result of a public process, and the neighborhood having, from my point of view, the final word.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Segal?
Nothing quite so elaborate. Just wanted to show, or comment, that I think this process demonstrates what Tim was talking about, about the bids for the buses. We had six vendors bid, actually five, one was non-responsive, and there was a pretty big range of prices on the demolition of the school. And that we had five people who bid on it, I'm hoping is the reason that we got such a good value on the work to be done, unless somebody can explain that there was some other factor. But competition in this sort of circumstances paid big dividends.
Okay. Any other? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 8D, the demolition of Walker Elementary School.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, and unless, which include the HR organizational report and addendum, and the student discipline, unless otherwise modified below, the Board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases, in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4145 is expelled for the remainder of this school year. Students 4146, 4149, and 4150 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of next school year. Students 4151, 4152, and 4153 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the entire 2018 and 19 school year. Expulsions for students 2024, 2025, and 2027 are held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year and through the second trimester of next school year. The expulsion for student 2026 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year through the first trimester of next school year. The expulsion for student 4147 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year. And the expulsion for student 4148 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year through the entire 2018, 19 school year. And the following students were given EIA's. Student 3400 was pulled by administration. So, this is the list. 3433, 3434, 3440, 3441, 3442, 3443, student 3444, 3445, student 3446, 3450, 3452, 3453, 3455, 3456, 3459, 3450, and 3461. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
The next item on our agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
There it goes. It lit up. Thank you, Mr. Scovano. For my report tonight, I'd like to discuss the topic of evidence-based funding. I think it's really timely, because we received some news that the state of Illinois is working hard to release the dollars. Just to give some background on that, Illinois freed up $350 million to go towards evidence-based funding. And the way that money is going to be distributed is very different than the way it's been done in the past. Illinois went through and did two things. They looked at where, basically, best practice on what evidence says, or research says should, is the adequate funding level for every school in the state of Illinois. And they based that on research-based practices. The second thing they did is, they looked at every district in the state of Illinois, and they ranked them in terms of a percentage of adequacy, or how close each school district is to their adequacy target. The Rockford Public Schools, similar to many schools in Winnebago, Boone, and Oggo County, ranked at the 64% adequacy level. The range in the state of Illinois is 42% on the low end, all the way to over 200% adequacy on the high end. So, there are some districts in the state of Illinois that currently, through local tax dollars, and whatever state dollars and federal dollars they receive, basically get twice as much as they need to provide an adequate education. And there are some districts that get about just over 40% of what is needed. And Rockford is much closer to that 42% than we are to that 200 or even 100% target. So, here's how that is going to work over the next 10 years, in theory. In year one, those $350 million are going to be distributed according to need. And there are four buckets or tiers that those schools and those districts will fit into. We anticipate that the Rockford Public Schools will fall into either the first tier or the second tier. And what that means is, when those $350 million are distributed, the first group of schools, or that first tier or bucket, will get 49% of the dollars before any other districts get money. Then, the next 50%, so now we're at 99% of the dollars, will go back to Tier One and to all of the schools in Tier Two. So, we will either be at the top of Tier One, or kind of the neediest of Tier Two. The last 1% or less than 1% gets distributed to the Tier Three and Tier Four. The reason I bring this issue up is because this is a marathon, not a sprint. In order to get districts to an adequacy target without taking the dollars away from the wealthier districts, this has to be sustained over what is estimated to be a 10-year timeframe. So, our vigilance is going to be really important. While we do anticipate some benefit from the first year of this commitment, it's a long way to 70%, 80%, 90%, or even 100% of adequacy. So, this budget cycle has been slow in implementation, and we're hopeful in the next month or two, we will actually receive whatever dollars are determined from the Illinois State Board of Education. And I will be, along with Ms. Thorne, reporting to the Board about what the status of that work is. But I also bring that up because there's a larger issue as well, that this is something that needs to become certain on an annual basis, because from a policy standpoint, as well as for the advocacy of our children, I don't believe in the state of Illinois, zip codes should determine that wide of a variance for support of public education, particularly when the state constitution says the primary support for public education should come from the state. The reason we have such a wide variety is because of our state's historically large reliance on local property taxes. So, we see that in a community like Rockford, where we tax ourselves at a very, very high rate to provide local support for public education, and yet are only able to reach 64% of adequacy, which is, again, based on what research says students need, and it's based on the needs of your students. So, this is something that I think we have to pay very, very close attention to as we move forward, and I wanted to just give some of the high-level overview to the Board about how that works. I know I've mentioned it before, but I think it's something the community needs to pay very close attention to. It's something I hope is a topic in the gubernatorial race, both the primaries and in the general election. And this is something that we should not ever take our eyes off of over the next decade. And I hope that this Board and administration, and our entire community, will continue that advocacy for a sustained period of time, because that range and that variance of adequacy is not acceptable. It was first cited back in the early 90s, when I was doing undergraduate education. Jonathan Kozol wrote a book called Savage Inequalities, that talked about the difference between funding at East St. Louis and New Trier. And it hasn't changed much. And that's almost, I mean, we're talking about a significant period of time. So, kudos to the state for finally taking step one to address this, but let's stay on that journey for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on then to committee reports. Mrs. McCullough, the Education Committee report?
Education Committee has not met since our last Board meeting. I had promised you an update on the early childhood piece and the questions that had been asked, but I'm going to beg that I bring that to you when they're ready to actually bring the request for the Board to consider expanding the early childhood program, and make sure we have all the questions answered before that is brought forward to this Board. So, that's delayed. I would like to say, I don't know if anybody took the time, under recurring contracts, there was an addendum to our K-12 Insight. And I spent a little bit of time with Ms. Munson yesterday, because, you know, trying to understand what we're doing with this. I think one of the hardest things we, as a Board, as an entire educational community, have to do is to get the input of our parents. And so, what that particular contract does is, it is going to reach out and work with both parents and students. We're going to see if we can get some better response and some better input by utilizing K-12 Insight to work with us. And the survey is to determine perceptual gaps. They're studying, oh, I just lost my, they're going to be asking questions on academic support, student support, school leadership, family involvement, safety and behavior. And it'll be a lot of online, but it'll also be some focus groups. And I don't know if you, I'm just kind of summarizing, but it's going to be done, piloted at Ellis, Swan Hillman, Lathrop, Rolling Green, Nelson, and Spring Creek Elementary Schools. And I would say, from Ed Committee's standpoint, that we'll be very interested in having responses and finding out how successful we are, working with an outside group and that anonymity that that provides our parents and students, so that they can feel honest in their response, and see if that can help us as we move forward, because that's a piece of information or communication that I think that we are lacking. It's really hard to get. So, I just wanted to, it was important to me from Ed Committee's standpoint, and I'll look forward to having a report on that as well. But meanwhile, our next Ed Committee meeting in this room at 5:30 next Tuesday, the 20th.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Rollins?
Finance Committee met in this room on Monday, February 5th at 5:30. We did start the work of looking at the fiscal year 19 budget. What the administration is doing is bringing to us the budget in sort of segments, and giving us a high-level overview of the segment. And by the way, we're going to start meeting more than once a month to try to play catch-up with the budget development. First segment was operations, which Mr. Schmidt went through with us. And I guess I would add, you know, we've got to talk about what the process is going to be here because one of the things that came out of that in my discussions with the superintendent afterwards is that what Mr. Schmidt was presenting is a very early look at what is partly a list of, sort of a wish list of various things that are, are being thought about. And with the thought that the board can then weigh in on what they think about it. But I'm not sure what the process is going to be for the board to weigh in on, on what we think about any of these things. So I would ask you to take the time to go to board docs, if you haven't, and look at the presentation that was done at the finance committee. And, and I'll, I'll pull out a few highlights, just the things that we talked about or that struck me. Once again, they're budgeting buying 30 buses. Our fleet is down to 260 some, which is good. We were at over 270, so we are pulling the fleet down. Our goal is to replace 10% a year. So this is just like this year, which we just approved. We're a little bit over the goal. One of the reasons for that, we've had this discussion before, is that we got a batch of buses back in 2010 with problematic engines. And so they, they want to speed up trying to replace those buses. So they're, they're proposing to budget 30 buses. Related, now this falls under the wish list part of it, so I'm just going to point this out. There is a proposal to look at a system which is called Smart Idle, which is a remote start system that would be put on all of the buses. That would be a capital spend of $583,000. And that would be, as I understand it, something that would either start the buses automatically once certain factors were hit, either temperature or battery level. Or I think that I heard that it could even be done through a smartphone application by the transportation director. If we did that, there might be a savings on personnel, because right now, what we're having to do on cold days is call people in at 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. to get the buses started. Weekends, that's right, if for, if it gets cold over the weekend. But what I didn't hear, I did ask this question, is whether anybody had done this, the analysis of what the potential personnel savings were. So that's an example where, that's a lot, lot of money. It's half a million dollars. And I guess I'd like to see a little more robust financial cost-benefit analysis to see what, what the payback period would be if we did something like that. I mean, there is a benefit beyond the finances. There's a benefit to reliability and making sure the buses start on time and the kids are being picked on time, picked up on time. But, you know, I would like to see a little more of a financial analysis than what we got that Monday night. If you look on page 42 of the presentation, it's on board docs, there's a list of capital projects, some of which are baked in, but not all of which. And some of these are on the wish, which, excuse me, wish list. So one of the things that kind of, that I did ask a question about is land acquisition. And it's in here for $225,000 at Haskell, Roosevelt, and West. And I did clarify that this is not part of the facilities plan. And there's a proposal out there to buy houses around those three schools and tear them down. And I've just, I guess I've just got a question about, if it's not part of the facilities plan, whether we should have more of a robust conversation about whether that's how we want to spend a quarter of a million dollars. Again, that's the sort of a process issue and how we go about talking about something like that. The West piping is in there as a reserve spend with a plug figure of a million dollars. We've talked about that before. I don't think anybody really knows what that number is going to be. And it looks like we're just, we're just saying that that's probably going to be a reserve spend. I did ask the question on the staffing side, because Mr. Connor had put a bug in my ear. The lunch aids have not seen an increase in their compensations since 2008. And we have not increased the rate for the lunch aid since 2008. And so the presentation that we got on February 5th showed the same number of lunch aids, the same FTEs with the same total compensation. I asked the question, was told that Mr. Zetiker is still looking at that. Again, I don't know if Mr. Zetiker, if you're in a position to talk about that, but I-
Yeah, I, I can update. We are looking at that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to look at non-bargaining and other positions as far as compensation's concerned, so that process is started. But I don't have a, a number for you tonight.
Okay. But in terms of, you know, getting a budget done, we obviously know, need to know what we're putting in for our staffing. So the, two things that are kind of, I'll say, similar. And one of these is wasn't really talked about that much at the finance committee, but I want to use it as a springboard to talk about it. I did ask Mr. Schmidt, you know, we've got the facilities plan, we've got the deferred maintenance plan, but then we've been asking the administration to create a comprehensive repair and maintenance plan going forward to try to keep us out of the hole that we were in before. And so I asked Mr. Schmidt the question, is that plan for this year, for the fiscal year 19 budget, is that going to be fully funded? And his response was that most of what's coming up in fiscal year 19 is really covered under either the deferred maintenance plan or the facilities plan. But he said he would get back to either the operations or the finance or both with the answer of what is not covered and whether or not that's going to be budgeted in fiscal year 19. But here's, here's my real point, is that afterwards, Mr. Schmidt came up and was showing me this, sort of the, the spreadsheets that he's got and the aggregate level spreadsheets. And the point that I want to make to the board is, we, we did a 10-year facilities plan, which we paid for with, I think, 20-year bonds. So there's a gap there. So starting in about, and if I remember right, because I don't have them in front of me, I think it's about 2022, we're going to start seeing things that are on that repair and maintenance plan that are not covered in the facilities plan, and that start getting into some relatively significant dollars. And so what I'm going to suggest, and this ties into, you know, this whole conversation, what I'm going to suggest is that we really need to start taking more of a multi-year approach to thinking about those issues. And there is a tendency that if we find extra money, to say, let's spend it. And so we need to be, I think, more cognizant of the things that are coming up in the next five years that we're going, that somebody, it might not be us, somebody is going to have to pay for in the next five years. And if we start having some extra money, it might be prudent to kind of set that money aside so that we've got it when we need it to pay for those. Similarly, if you want to look at where we are in the furniture plan, that appears on page 55. Again, that was, you know, we kind of pulled the furniture out of the facilities plan and said we'd pay for it separately. There's about $4 million that's in the facilities plan. There's another 13 that's got to come out of the operating budget. In the first few years of the facilities plan, because of budgeting issues that we had, we didn't actually make our budgeted or, our budgeted or scheduled numbers, which means we'll have to pay a little bit more for the furniture in the out years. So originally, we said we'd spend 1.3 million each year for 10 years. But for fiscal year 19, we're going to have to budget about 1.6 million. Fiscal year 20, 1.6 million. Fiscal year 21, 1.5 million. So those are just things that we're, we're also going to have to keep in mind going forward. I really would ask you to take a look at the presentation, go through it, and see if you've got any questions, because that is part of what this is about, is we're getting a little more transparency on the front end so that we're not having conversations in June or, or May about the budget. So look through it, and if you have any questions, you know, certainly you should talk to Ms. Thorne or about this specific issue, this specific part of it, Mr. Schmidt. Excuse me. You know, one thing that Ms. Thorne mentioned is that they, and don't hold us to these numbers, but they've done very rough guesstimation as far as, we talked about, I brought up the issue last time about how much of our real estate property taxes were being prepaid this year that should probably be allocated next year's budget. Back of the envelope math, just on a guesstimation, they're looking at almost $9 million. So it's not an insignificant number, and so we'll need to think about that, how to treat that. We also did, although Dr. Jarrett has already given you probably a, a better description than I would, have a presentation on this evidence-based funding formula. The only thing that I would add, which was of interest to me, and again, this is part of the presentation, so you can go to board docs and you can take a look at it, is in addition to money, the ISBE has apparently established adequacy target for resources, for instance, staff ratios, so, which was kind of interesting to me. So just if you want to know, I mean, according to the ISBE, our target should be for K through third grade, a ratio of 15 students to one teacher for low-income students. There was some discussion about that. And, you know, obviously, it'll take something, it'll take, it'll take money to get us there, right? So I, I guess that if we actually start seeing the money from the state, we should be thinking about that as well. That in terms of uses for that money, if these are actually researched base resource targets, that that's something we ought to be thinking about as well, whether we should be trying to hit those staffing ratios or some of these other resource ratios that they've established. Ms. Thorne did mention that we have not seen any of the new money from the state yet. I did just see an article in the paper the other day. I mean, it was a massive piece of legislation. And I know that the state superintendent just got hauled before the general assembly to testify about why they haven't released the money. And the answer, from the article that I read, the answer pretty much is, it's a massive piece of legislation. They're still trying to figure it out. And, and they think that there's going to have to be some corrective legislation to, to fix some things. But at least according to the article I read, they said that they were, I think they said they'd start releasing or try to start releasing in April. Is that about right? Thanks.
Okay. Your next meeting, do you have a date for that then?
Yes, sorry. So we are going to, like I said, start meeting more frequently. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 26th, here at 5:30 p.m.
Mr. Connor, operations committee.
Operations committee met in this room on February 6th at 6:30. There were eight agenda items. The first three, which are all on the board agenda tonight, which are the health, life, safety amendments for Eisenhower, Jefferson, Lincoln, and Roosevelt, the license agreement for shot spotter gunshot location, and the resolution authorizing sale of a portion of parcel at Jefferson High School. All three were recommended by the committee with, truthfully, not a lot of, not a lot of discussion. A couple of quick points. The health, life, safety, if you read through it, are for situations that are needed and provide some risk, and that's why they're being recommended. The shot spotter is interesting. That's really in cooperation with local law enforcement in Rockford and is really the school district doing its part to help support the local officers when they're going about and trying to do follow-ups for situations involving gunshots. And the last is the sale of a portion at the far north and west side of Jefferson that is frankly not a particularly desirable piece of land for Jefferson. And there's interest in that, so there's going to be a, essentially an auction on that. So those three were discussed. On the report updates, this might be of interest. Of the five items, the first was building disposition for Nelson Elementary School. And the commitment, both from Mr. Schmidt and myself, we will engage with the neighborhood on the planning for that. Right now, as many of you might remember, there has been no interest shown in that particular parcel of land. It's right near Churchill Park, and the park district feels they have adequate coverage on that. So we're going to be holding some sessions on that and following up. The facilities master plan has been stated here many times. We're really right, we're in good shape on that one, both financially in terms of timing. The lifecycle reports, I think the point that I'd like to make there is that there's an absolute need for us to be cognizant of what we need to do on the budgeting side. The good news is, the operations group has what I consider to at least be a plan and a method of tracking all that from painting to roofs, sidewalks, and so forth. So I think we're a step ahead there, and I appreciate the operations group and what they're doing. Fourth, and which provided much of the discussion, and Mr. Segal already basically kind of hinted at this, custodial update on airmark. I think the net of what we discussed was that there is a bit of difference between buildings, but overall, the feeling is that there is still a transition going on. And we're obviously in quite a bit after the start of the school year. And there is a desire, I think, both from the committee and the board members, and I'm sure most of the board members and perhaps the administration are getting a lot of commentary on this. So that will be something that we have not forgotten about and that we will be paying a lot of attention to that. And I agree with Mr. Segal. Mrs. Ellis did a good job and goes around and I'm sure gets a lot of feedback. So that was the vast majority of our discussion. There was some discussion about the budget. Mr. Rollins did a really good job of bringing up the issues, which I appreciate. But there was a review of that. Our next meeting will be March the 6th at 6:30 in this room.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Yes, Ms. McCullough.
So I'm not sure that this is the right place for it, but I did try to listen to your meeting. Three out of the four meetings that I've tried to listen to from my home have been unsuccessful. This last week was internal internet connection. The one before that, I was trying on channel 20, and there was not. And then there was another one where we had a picture and we didn't have any sound. So I've already spoken with Dr. Jarrett, and I know that hopefully some, but if we promise the public that we're going to be open and have these meetings either streamed or on channel 20, and I'm so glad that we do stream them, for those of us who don't have, you know, the cable, then we need to do that. And I also asked the, the legal department, I said, are we paying somebody? Because it's just not working. Three out of four, that's just, you know, 25% isn't real great. And as a board member, and as community members, I think it's a great service to be able to listen to what's going on in depth without having to always be present when you're not needed. So I'm bringing to the, that to you as operations as well, and see if there's any follow-up and the best way or what they can do moving forward.
I've communicated my frustration with that to Allen and Earl and others, Mr. Schmidt, whatever. And I've, I've basically given up on channel 20, because programs, sometimes you can hear. But in, in my neighborhood, there are any meeting that the school district has that's broadcast on channel 20, you cannot hear anything. You know, you might hear a whisper if you turn it up to 10 times higher than it should be, you know, or whatever. So it's very, very frustrating. And I know that Allen has done everything on this end to try to make it work. And I, I don't know, but it's, it's unacceptable. If we, if we can't get sound on channel 20, then we shouldn't be doing it, I guess. You know, maybe we do something else. But I, I've gone just to streaming, and it works fine doing that, so.
But streaming didn't work on Tuesday.
Okay.
But, but that was internal, and they're working on it, and I appreciate that. I guess part of the question is the feedback loop. I mean, how do you guys know if it's not working unless we're texting, you know, to the people who are here at the meeting saying, please, Allen, can you get, we're not hearing you? So are we doing anything to consistently have an idea of what is and isn't working?
Yeah, I know, I know, Allen, one thing I will say to that is I know that Allen will run upstairs, and he'll be able to hear it from here on a TV in this building. But in our homes, we can't hear it. So it's not acceptable, so, anyway. Any other comments on that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Connor?
Yeah, what I'll say is that the operations committee will commit to doing a follow-up on that and make sure that that's an ongoing item. And on a personal note, operations committee, a number of times, have waved and said hello to the people at home, so.
Okay, I know you have.
If they don't have a signal, you know.
Okay, then, there you go.
Maybe they can see us waving. So that's half a loaf.
Okay, we do not have any action items for tonight. We'll move on to new business. Ms. Lawrence is going to present our next two items on private and residential placement contracts.
Would you like me to do them together?
Sure.
Okay. We're recommending two additional therapeutic day placements as our current placement options are out of seats for our younger students. The first is Hamilton Academy. It's about 50 miles outside of Rockford in Weston D. It offers a smaller learning environment for emotionally disabled and learning disabled students and focuses primarily on school anxiety and school refusal. The second one is Parkland Prep Academy, and it serves all eligibility categories and students K through 12.
And where is that one located?
That is in Streamwood.
Streamwood, that's right. I did look that one up. Is there still a Streamwood facility called Streamwood?
There is still, yes.
Okay.
And we have had students there.
Yep. Any questions? Ms. McCullough?
I, I do. I just don't understand our reimbursement on this. And I think just for edification, for everyone's edification, when a student is placed in a private facility, it's, can be done by the courts, it can be done by the IEP team, it can be done by, how, what other means of?
Student discipline. So we have to provide placement.
So if we have a special ed student, and they have some sort of discipline where they're taken out of their school building, we have to provide elsewhere, do they have to be a special ed student to be, they have to have an IEP and have special ed category to be placed in any of these buildings?
Yes.
Any of these outside the district? And then, when is it we provide transportation and when is it we don't? Obviously, if we are paying room and board for somebody to stay there, we're not transporting, although we are required to still transport them to and from and transport their parents- although we are required to still transport them to and from, and transport their parents so many times a year, and the like. But what about our other students? Do we use buses? Do we use taxis? What do we use?
We use Sunrise.
Okay. So, everyday Sunrise goes to West Dundee and back with these student, with the students that you were talking about?
Yes.
And then, where, what is the reimbursement? Because when I first got on the board, we were always told, oh, you know, the state's going to reimburse you for, and I'm looking at the district cost for these placements, and it's incredibly high. It's not anything that I was led to believe. And I, by the way, I think this was a great chart, that you put that on, if that was you, whoever put that together, so that we really can have an idea of what the daily rate is, what the cost is, and our estimated reimbursement, and what our, so, can you just give us a little bit of insight?
Daily rates go anywhere from $100 to $400. So, I mean, it's hard to guesstimate a reimbursement. And what, what I've seen so far this year with reimbursement is not much. I can go back to last year and determine how much we were reimbursed, but I think that's, that's also up to the state as well, is what we get back.
So, when we talk about reimbursement, is it all state, or is it federal and state? I mean, what are the sources of reimbursement? And is it based on a percentage of what the cost is?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't know if it's what it's based upon.
Storn, do you know?
I don't know what it's based upon, but it's part of the categorical payments, and we have not gotten any categorical payments for fiscal 18. We got the fourth quarter categorical payment for 17 in October of 2017. So, it's part of that process.
Okay.
I can, I mean, I can tell you what the dollar amount is, based on what we got last year.
I can tell you that we are definitely under the state percentages for students in separate facilities. We're at 4.3%, the state's at 6.4. So, we're trying to get kids back. We brought 15 students back this year from therapeutic day, and we have several other students that are transitioning halftime.
So, where is our local therapeutic day?
We have Chanlight. They're not ISB approved yet. They're in the queue to be approved. We're just waiting on ISB to do that.
Sure.
And there's really nothing within 50 miles of us.
Okay.
So, the closest is Belvedere Camelot.
Okay.
It's the closest that's to us.
And when a student is, is there a certain distance where we choose to not transport every day, and we buy that in breakfast?
Try to secure placement. So, the, kind of, part of the other issue is that the facilities don't have to accept the student. So, if the student doesn't meet their criteria, then we have to go back to the table and try to secure additional placements.
Which is why we have students out of state as well. Don't we have Nebraska?
Kansas or something.
Kansas, somewhere out there. Wow. All right. And we need to, we need to provide an education for our students. It's just disappointment that we can't do something more local, for the sake of the student as well. If you've got a behavior, and you have to sit on a bus route trip every day.
We're working on it. We've been working with one of the facilities to try to bring them to us, out to this area.
Super. Okay. Thank you.
Do we know the timeframe for the local provider that might be? You said they're in the process.
We met with operations just about a month ago. They, they wanted to use some of our facilities that we were shutting down. That's not possible. And so, we were giving them other ideas locally that they could look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This will be presented at our February 27th board meeting for a vote. Ms. Storn, you're going to do the next three items on health, life, safety amendments, the parcel of land, and shot spotter location system.
Thank you very much, President Scurowano.
You must have drawn the short straw.
So, the first one is the life, health, safety amendment. This was vetted at Ops Committee on February 6th. We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the life safety amendments at the locations below, which include Eisenhower, Jefferson, Lincoln, and Roosevelt. And these items are to address compliance issues that have been identified in life safety inspections. And so, this will be paid for out of the life safety funds, and the work will be done over the 2018-2019 summer months.
I had a question that I didn't get an answer to yet, but it was, these appeared to be mostly roof and HVAC. Maybe Kevin's the right person. Kevin, are you the right person to ask the technical questions to? On these buildings, weren't they mostly roof and HVAC type? One was a roof access issue, and whatever. My, my question mostly is, do we bid these out?
Yes, the majority of these are projects that are going to be bid out.
Okay. So, are we getting enough bids, and, you know, are we getting a good value for the bids that we accept, or whatever? I didn't see any information in the, in what we got that talked about what the different bids were.
Yes.
And maybe you don't have to do that, but I was just, was curious, is?
We're not at that point yet, Mr. Scurowano. So, all this is, is the state has a list of things that we can pay for with life safety funds?
Right.
And all they're doing, as I understand it, is amending that list. And once we get the state to approve that, and we approve it, then we'll start the process of actually bidding out the works.
These are estimates that we're not approving these dollar amounts, then?
Well, one of them is for the Roosevelt perimeter repairs that you approved tonight.
Right.
So, we wouldn't authorize that work to occur until
Right.
this amendment for that one is approved. Lincoln, it's installing ADA compliant access to the band and music rooms.
Right, right.
And repairing the parapets there. Jefferson is a project that's going to be awarded here in the next month or so. HVAC for the pool building.
Okay.
Eisenhower, we'll have a project going out to bid very soon to provide proper access to the roofs.
Right.
For safety's sake. And I believe that covers them all, so.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Go ahead with the next one, then.
All right. Thank you. The next one is for the land sale at Jefferson. This is a resolution authorizing administration to move forward with a sealed auction bid process at a minimum bid of $67,000. March 28th, we'll start accepting bids, and the sealed bids will close on March 30th at 3:00 PM, with the opening at 4:00 PM. The land will go to the highest bidder, and it will be awarded at the April 10th, 2018 board meeting.
Okay.
This will, this also was vetted at the Operations Committee meeting on February the 6th, and I believe it was discussed at several prior meetings of the Operations Committee as well.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Mr. Rollins?
I was just, I think we might have talked about this ones before, a long time ago. I asked the same question, I'll get the same answer. I just want to make sure, when things like this come before us, I want to make sure 20 years from now, somebody isn't going to say, why in the world did we sell that? So, are we really sure? Are we really, really, really sure that we will never want this land? Because once you sell it, you'll never get it back.
Okay.
Anybody want to take that one?
In anticipation of a question like that, I went on Windgist and got some acreages for our various facilities at the high school, and then the former West High School. Jefferson currently has 99 and a quarter acres, which for a single building is by far our largest campus. This, I think, would take it down to approximately 94 and 3/4 acres, or something like that. Guilford, with the stadium and all the things that it has there, but we don't have it at Jefferson, has 52 acres roughly. East has 31 acres. West only had 17 and a quarter acres. And then, Auburn, Kennedy Middle School, and McIntosh are kind of on a giant mega parcel, if you will, which totals 104 acres. So, there's your comparison, so.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I took it, another question, though.
Okay, go ahead.
Which is, although I think Mr. Connor had his light on, if you want to take it. So, we had those two parcels on the east side that we decided weren't really right for us to build new schools on. Are we ever going to put them up for sale?
So, yeah. That actually is a question that we're asking about. I think the one thing that I'll say is that specifically to Jefferson, we looked a lot at that little piece, and it's not a particularly desirable piece of property, to be honest. And there is community interest in that. So, that's really what drove that. And I think in 20 years, I would say, if so many questions that, they, they probably aren't busy enough, but, just my opinion.
You're on the record now.
That's right. I'm on the record now. But I said, but there's a larger issue with what I'll call whole pieces of land. So, clearly, at Jefferson, there was just the one little piece. Pretty comfortable with that. In terms of, say, train of road property and all, that actually is a separate question. And what I would imagine is, whenever we start the planning process for the next 10-year plan, whenever that is, I think that's the right time to bundle all these things together. Because from my point of view, my comment is, even for our current facilities plan, when we started out, we had a plan for building closings, and with our attendance in the Rockford Public Schools, I think there is some question about what we want to do with some of the properties that are still there. And so, I think that, plus the fact that we do have some properties that might be useful for something, is something for us to really think about as part of a larger effort driven by educational needs. That would be my recommendation, that's some of the conversation we've had to date.
Shot spotter.
All right. So, my last item is the shot spotter. This was also vetted at the Operations Committee on February 6th. What this does, it assists police officers in the area to be able to determine in a very small location where gunfire shots have been made from. So, this, this helps to, it helps their response time in locating emergency response. So, this is kind of a, it's a collaboration with community partners, and they're asking us to be allowed to put this, these spot shooters on some of our school locations, in addition to locations that they already have around the city.
Thank you. If I remember right, it's 12 buildings? If I, if I remember right?
Up to 12.
Up to, up to 12? Okay.
Do we have any idea when we'll know? It looks like we'll find out now.
Okay. Hi, you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, okay, here we go. I'm Doug Pan. I'm an Assistant Deputy Chief at the Police Department Administration, and this is my project, the whole gunshot detection system, so I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay. So, Mr. Segal?
So, how many buildings will you plan to put one of these sensors on? I can end a sentence with a preposition.
Right, right now, the plan is for nine, I believe. But I know the agreement says up to 12, but, but at this point, it's nine. And it's mostly east side locations. We have, we have two square miles on each side of the river. We're not disclosing the, the map or the actual locations publicly, but, but we do know that, you know, they're looking to get, to get above the tree heights, so, so the taller buildings are good buildings for that. Actually, this building is one of them, where they, where they would mount the equipment.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes, I got a question, maybe it's more for administration, but I think the right term is exposure, right? But what kind of exposure, or legal exposure, do we have here? Let's say, for example, a tower falls and hits someone. Are we liable then? And then, the other part is, are there exposure with, let's say, false alarms, or something, someone suing us? What kind of exposure do we have as a district?
Under the contract, it's, it, those kind of incidents would go to the police and to the city for exposure.
Okay. Mrs. McCullough?
Got it. So, are we the only entity, we're not the only entity that you're working with for location, are there? I mean, will there be others? And what is your goal in terms of the number of these that you'd like to place out there? You said?
There's, the equipment, first of all, the equipment's pretty small.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the actual box is like about, I don't know.
A bread box.
By eight inches.
Right.
And it, and it goes on a small pole, and it, but it sticks above the, the roof line on the buildings. So, as far as a, a large tower falling or anything like that, it's, it's a very small piece of equipment that's really almost unnoticeable. As far as the, the number of sensors, we've got about, well, right now, the plan is to install about 105 sensors throughout the, throughout the city. And we're working with several different organizations, both public and private. There's, I mean, we have some private residents, some private businesses, the city government. Those are the primary people, or groups, I should say, that are interested in it, or are going to be giving permission for the equipment to be mounted on their facility.
Have you approached anybody who's refused you?
You know, actually, Shot Spotter has done all of the, all the work on it, and so, as far as the businesses and the public organizations, I don't think so. I'm sure that, they did approach some private residents, and so, I'm sure that there's been some of them that have said no. But overall, we've had a very positive response to it. It really is a system that will get, it triangulates gunfire, so it uses the acoustical sensors to pinpoint where the gunfire is coming from. So, when the officers are responding, instead of, you know, somebody saying, hey, the gunfire is coming from somewhere over that way, maybe a block away, I'm not really sure. Shot Spotter guarantees within 20 meters. But in reality, we found from talking to some of their other customers, that it's, it's really about an arm span. I mean, they'll, they'll get it down to within feet, depending on the weather and tree coverage and that kind of thing. But they're really, it's very accurate and very quick. About 90 seconds from the time the gunshots are fired until we get the alert of, with the triangulated location.
My question would have been, why did somebody refuse you, but, but you're not, so what about the upkeep? I mean, is there anything, batteries? I mean, is there anything else involved with taking care of these? And then, is that all part of this corporation's job to come do that?
It's, it's a subscription-based service with Shot Spotter, so, so the, the permission that you would be signing would be between the school district and Shot Spotter. And they're responsible, as part of that subscription, to take care of all of the equipment. There, there is a small power drain, because they have to be plugged in, but it's, I think they said about six cents a month, or something like that, that it, that it costs to run, run, what's that?
Six watt.
Yeah, six watt power supply. It's very, it's very minimal amount of power that it takes.
And are we liable if somebody, somebody takes a shot at one of these?
At the shot.
No, and I say that sort of in jest, but not really. I mean, if it's up there, and, and certain contingent of people would like to not have them up there, are we liable for that, or they?
Liable for what?
Replacement, or taking?
The 90 seconds, they'd know.
Oh, no. Not, not for replacement, for, I mean, that's a, it's all, it's all subscription, subscription-based through Shot Spotter. It's almost like getting a cell phone, you know, and they're, I mean, they, they have the equipment.
Okay.
But they replace the equipment, they maintain the equipment, and if it's damaged, they'll, they'll come out and replace it.
And what is the district's budget, the police department's? What is the budget for this entire operation?
Well, the, the city council approved it $65,000 per year, per square mile.
Per year, per what?
Per square mile.
Okay.
So, it's, it's significant. It's a significant investment, but it gets us to the gunfire, to, you know, and the thing is, it's all part of a greater system. So, not just, does it enhance our investigations on the street, and provide officer safety, provide, you know, an adequate, thorough response to the community? It also helps us in our, in the investigations end by, you know, collecting evidence and interviewing witnesses where we actually know where the gunfire occurred, to identify those people that we know are firing the guns, and then getting them off the street eventually in the end.
Connor?
This is more of a, excuse me, a comment, but at Operations, the question was asked, what happens if we don't approve this? And it was very clear, and the committee was unanimous on this, that it's, it's really a benefit for public safety, and it's really our part of this to help wherever these areas